All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Cheyenne City Council's work session today. We have Steve Jimenez here from Horse Palace Swan Ranch, and we're going to go over a master plan presentation. Stevie, you have some of your colleagues online?
Sir.
All right, go ahead and go forward with your introduction.
All right. Well, I want to thank the mayor and city council for allowing us to be here today. My name is Steve Jimenez, general manager of Wyoming Horse Racing. We do have the partners on Zoom. We have Nick Hughes and Mr. Pete Legori. I don't think John's on yet.
Hello, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, welcome, Nick, Pete.
So we were here to give an update on the current project, discuss our master plan, and then next steps. Our current property was a $25 million property that opened on June 22nd, and it's been a huge success. We've exceeded our expectations. Weekends have been maxing out, and our goal of out-of-state customers has been achieved. About 76% of our customers come from out of state, so it's been great and just exactly what we thought. The restaurant, bar, Dunkin', and the weekend entertainment has contributed to our success. On weekends with Dunkin', we're averaging over 100 dozen donuts, and during the week, we're doing 60 dozen donuts per day. So we're doing very well there. Having the amenities people want have created the successful project, and additional amenities will create future growth. Our current 300 units have exceeded expectations, resulting in higher taxes locally. Our projected taxes were about $900,000 for each, you know, for the state, county, and city. We're projecting it closer to 1.1. The Breeders' Cup or Breeders' Cup Breeders' Fund is projected about 800. We're going closer to 900, and the purses will be about the same, 800 to 900. The one thing that we are extremely proud of is our Wyoming First Initiative. There's four parts of that program. Hire Wyoming. We currently employ over 100 employees, and all but one is from Wyoming. It's we had a then buy Wyoming. We have, we did 80% of the construction spending contracts where Wyoming companies helped Wyoming fill philanthropic projects. We renovated Engine 4420 in Evanston. We supported the Wyoming Sports Ranch in Casper, and then obviously many, you know, we did purchase three dogs, canine dogs, and Cheyenne. Helped. We also helped the equine industry. We invest in our own live racing facility in Sweetwater, about 1.25 million, and then Laramie County Community College Endowment Scholarship. I do have a, I know you guys received the plans. I can give you a larger plan if you'd like. You know, this would be a lot easier to see. Oh, I'm sorry. So we want to discuss our master plan, you know, but why now? It literally took us two years to get our Swan Ranch property up and running. So it's going to take time to do some of these things that we're looking to do. We are here today to ask for your support as we have received in the past. Phase two of our master plan would add about 41,000 square foot to the facility with a small theater, two restaurants, and a 150-room hotel with meeting and banquet space. Projected cost for the expansion is about 76 million with 200 construction jobs, including the hotel project, which is about 33 million and 150 construction jobs. Just from the expansion, projected additional taxes of 1.8 million goes to each for the state, county, and city, and then projected Breeders' Fund of 1.44 million, and purses would be the same. We currently employ 135 employees. With the expansion, we would add up to 375 employees with another 75 employees for the hotel. Once everything is up and running, we would employ up to 450 people. As I mentioned earlier, we are maxing out on weekends, so the additional amenities would, we would need to add another 600 HHR terminals to accommodate everything. We currently have approved 400 with the additional terminals to go along with the added amenities. We would be able to better compete with Black Hawk Colorado, keeping us in line with our original goal of bringing in out-of-state revenue and customers. The addition of the hotel would bring in extended state customers and would drive incremental business to the area. These overnight customers would make a weekend of it by visiting Cheyenne along with Swan Ranch. We've covered a lot. We have a different model than our competitors. We are focused on the touristics on the borders, you know, as we are with Swan Ranch, and we are currently building our second property in Evanston. So what are the next steps? The review, the review and approval process has several steps, but the first one is to respectfully request a letter of support from the city. The letter would acknowledge that the city council is on board. We're not asking for approval, rather looking for support with our master plan, which includes the amenities we discussed today, the addition of 41,000 square feet with the small theater, two restaurants, 150-room hotel, with meeting and banquet space, and the addition of 600 more HHR terminals. If the city is in agreement, we would go to the Laramie County Commission, ask for their letter of support approving our master plan. If successful, then we would then go to the Wyoming Gaming Commission to get approval from them on the additional terminals. But receive approval from the gaming commission, this allows to take the next steps in starting the architectural and engineering phases of the review for the master plan. I think you can all agree that we have been, we have delivered everything we have promised. We continue to ask for your support to bring in, or continue to ask for your support to continue to bring in out-of-state dollars and visitors to Cheyenne. As you can see, this benefits everyone, most of all this degree state of Wyoming. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Steve. I'll start with Mr. Seagrave.
Just a, just a real quick question. You indicated you're going to have a banquet facility as well. Is that part of the hotel then?
Yeah.
And roughly how many people would that handle?
We haven't gotten to that, to the great details. This is just kind of our conceptual thoughts.
I just, I just know that that's a need in our community.
We see that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a couple of questions. In requesting the letter of support, how's that going to be used? Is that just going to the gaming commission?
Yes. Yeah, we would fill out our application that we normally would, and they would be added to the application.
And then you said you were, I think you projected needing 600 HHR terminals. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, then there's
A little more, 600 more.
Yes. 600 additional. And I, sometime I need a tutorial, I guess. I mean, because they're HHR terminals, which are considered
Historical horse racing. They're historical, historic horse racing, yeah.
But they're considered games of skill, but then there are other machines that are just games of chance, aren't there? Or are they all historical horse racing machines?
All our games are historical horse racing.
Are they? Okay.
We do not have any games of skill. It's not allowed in our, in our facility.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yeah, President Escobal through you. So I'm just curious, when you talk about the 150-room hotel and the phase two facility, are you planning to have conference space?
Yeah, just meeting and banquet space. So it's similar banquet and conferences.
In the hotel or in the phase two? Okay. And then do, what is, are you thinking the seating capacity is going to be of the small theater?
We have, again, we haven't really, I mean, we haven't really talked about it.
Yeah, Commissioner, I can answer that. I'm sorry. We actually did the space allowance for a roughly 800-seat theater. And our view is that that would be used as multi-purpose space. So it could be used as entertainment for a theater. It could be used for marketing events. You know, anything you could think of in terms of that size facility, it wouldn't necessarily be locked into just entertainment.
Yes, one of my concerns or thoughts is that I am involved with a lot of organizations that are always looking for places to have conferences and conventions in the 200 to 400-person range and end up a lot of times in Casper because of cost and because of facilities. So I'm hopeful that this might be able to actually draw more people for that type of larger meeting to our community rather than sending everybody to the north.
Yeah, and that's why we looked at adding the banquet, which is conference-based, same thing. So for me, it's the same thing.
Yeah, we're, in fact, we're using a lot of conference space right now at the Embassy Suites out of Loveland because it's kind of a halfway point between, you know, the Denver community and the Cheyenne community for conferences. So, thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Seagrave.
Just a, okay. Your theater, I think, would be fabulous if you could make it an IMAX theater. I think there's any, I don't think there's any in this area.
Yeah.
Not in Wyoming, and I'm not sure about I'm not sure about Northern Colorado either.
Yeah.
That's interesting. One final question, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
When this is completed, will this be your final build-out? I know it earlier you'd talked about maybe even something like a entertainment park or something like that. That was initially one of the concepts, but will this max out your?
I'll have the partners answer that one.
Yeah, I think that, hi, everybody. It's Nick Hughes. Firstly, I want to apologize for not being able to be in-state. I originally did plan to be there alongside Steve during the presentation, but some family issues in England led me leaving later today to fly to England, so my apologies. And there was originally, when I was at the meeting, and it must be 18 months ago, perhaps two years, and there was a question about would we consider a golf course? And I let everybody know that I was such a terrible golfer that perhaps not. At that point, when we talked about what we might do there, it was really kind of a really open plan conceptual situation. What we've done there is we actually had a very in-depth third-party analysis done on what is required, what would, what would be the, you know, the best amenities to try and put in. And again, it's a blank canvas. That's why we're talking about combined meeting space and theater, and, you know, we know we need to put in at least another, another restaurant or two, different themed. You know, so we're really open to working with the city to try and understand what do you guys want? You know, what, what could we do that would benefit all of us? And remember, our market is predominantly to bring in out-of-state dollars to create Wyoming taxation. Something we've done very successfully in Kentucky in the past. And so, you know, there's plenty of options. Basically, what we have is 36 acres, which gives us a lot of ability to do a lot of things. What we've looked at is, you know, the concept of a hotel, because we need to compete with Black Hawk, and I think Steve might have mentioned this, and Black Hawk has everything. And what they also have is a pretty treacherous road in the winter trying to get up there. And we saw that last Saturday that our influx of out of state, not just Colorado, it's not just, you know, it's not only Colorado they're coming from, which is amazing to us. But the amount of in-state that weekend was astronomical, out-of-state astronomical. And, you know, it was a $1.5 million night in handle, which is a huge number. But the one commonality we're getting is we'd love to stay longer, but we've got to drive back, which is why we're looking at the fact that we need to have, you know, a hotel, and we need to compete in some ways with Black Hawk. Because when the weather's bad, people don't want to drive to Black Hawk. Whereas we're a much, you know, we can be complicated, we, in Wyoming, can be complicated for the weather. But believe me, it's a much better drive than having to get to Black Hawk. So we need to compete on that entertainment attraction situation. But we'd love to work with the city as we have done. You know, the mayor's been great. We consult whenever there's something going on. We want to show deference to the city council, to all of you. So let's work together on what might be needed. And again, it's a win-win. If we're bringing in 76% of our visitations from outside of the state, it's a great win-win situation.
And just add, just add one other, I guess, one or two other points. We have, as Nick said, 36 acres. This master plan would gobble up roughly about 12 to 14 of that. So we really do have more room to grow with land that we own. And, you know, we've been, quite honestly, I think, exploring a number of options of other things that might be complimentary to what we're thinking about doing here. But Nick's right. I think, understanding, you know, as one of the council members said earlier about the need for convention space, you know, us getting that kind of feedback is really important. You know, we did undertake a hotel study that looked at various size hotels on the campus there, as large as 500 rooms. And, you know, we tend to take a more conservative approach just from a financial standpoint and want to do things in increments. So this master plan that we're talking about now is, is what we would call, I guess, phase two. You know, phase three, if the hotel's successful, I would imagine we would want to add more rooms. But that really is, would be down the road. We want to make sure the demand is there before committing to build a much bigger facility on that end.
And so we just to, again, just to jump in. You know, the, we do everything in bite-sized chunks. So please don't think that tomorrow you're going to see 600 new units. We wouldn't do that. But here's the issue. For us to commit to the additional space to take the eventual 600 extra units and the hotel and everything else, we can't part-build the foundation. We can't part-build the utilities. And as has been said, you know, this is another 70, 80 million dollar investment on our part. And what we are kind of, is good, you know, because we're not a charity. We want to be good partners, but in the end, we're a business. And so we have to kind of have some sort of idea that if we're going to commit to another 70, 80 million dollars in investment, and a lot of that is upfront with legal fees, with consulting fees, with architectural fees, with actual, as I've said before, the foundational stuff, clearing land. Anyway, with all this stuff going on, it's very difficult for us to commit to that high level of initial investment and say, well, really, we're going to be capped, because our current 400 limit, 400 unit limit, it, we can't return the money in time, and not just the fact that myself and my partners are getting older every day, and we're not exactly spring chickens now, but more so to the fact that, you know, there has to be the return. And, and, and just to add one thing, you know, we've been in Wyoming now for nearly three years. We just came in, it's just December 21. I was involved in Wyoming long before, but as a company, we haven't taken a cent, not one cent out of Wyoming. We've reinvested everything. And it was already 26, 27, 28 billion dollar investment. Currently, we're in for, Pete, tell me if I'm wrong, 50, 55 million. And we haven't taken a penny out, and we're looking to keep putting money in. So, but we just need that support to say, okay, if we're, if you guys, us, if we're prepared to put another 70, 80 million in, what we've got to get through the gaming commission is the verification that we're not going to cap you other than, you know, the 600 extra, great. We're happy with that. If it keeps growing, we'll come back at another date and say, look, you know, based on what we're doing, we would like to expand even further, bigger hotel, bigger gaming facility, bigger entertainment facilities. But right now, we just need to know that we're on the right track, and we're not going to get capped, and then we can invest the money. And talking to the city and the county is all part of that. Because if you guys, if everybody is kind of not for it, then we need to know upfront within reason. And then, you know, we won't go. The Evanston, which is the other touristic, they're all in, you know, they're all very supportive on both sides. The support that we have received from day one from this city camp, it's critical. And, you know, we're eternally grateful, but that's why we're saying, let's work together. Tell us what it is we can do to enhance Cheyenne and the county to be able to benefit everybody. And now I'll shut up.
Mr. Hughes, thank you. It's President Escobal here. When we first visited with you about a year and a half ago, and we were talking about golf. We were talking more about Topgolf, not a golf course. That's maybe you might have thought.
I mean, we usually sit both.
Yeah, that's a difference. In another facet of entertainment into the Swan Ranch campus, something that Black Hawk does not have. Recently, the voters in Timneth voted down to have the Topgolf there. And we also feel like this community would really support something like that since we're weather limited in golf and only have access to 27 holes here in this community. So something like that would, will get people in that front range would more likely rather drive 60 miles north and 40 miles south. Especially since they have the historic horse racing campus there at Swan Ranch and the possibility of having a hotel there would certainly drive up your numbers.
Well, again, you know, we're definitely, this is why we want to have discussions, you know, to what the final plan would look like. My only concern, and I'm only speaking for me, is that every time I drive from Cheyenne to Denver, I pass that great big facility. And so would people drive, bearing in mind what our target market is, would they drive past them to come to us? There is already a Topgolf there. But you know what? I mean, again, this is all up for discussion and consultation altogether. Tell us what we can, what you would feel we could do.
And similarly, I would add, Nick, that if vendors or businesses have come to Cheyenne with ideas and are looking for land, you know, we would absolutely be happy to co-develop something, somebody. I mean, we don't necessarily have to own everything on the campus. You know, again, the idea is to look for something that's complimentary. I, you know, you use the term adult entertainment, and everybody immediately goes where they're not supposed to. But in my mind, you know, we really don't want children. You know, gaming is, HHR gaming and the other things that are going on in the bar and the entertainment and the facility are all adult-oriented activities. We want to make sure that when we have complimentary businesses out there that are more or less aligned with that. Because the worst thing would happen if, you know, underage customers start to sneak in and try to participate in the HHR. That would be bad for everyone.
We just recently had a business open here that has a bowling alley and attic rooms and arcades for kids, and it's all in the same building. Let me go to some of my council members that are online. Who do we have, Jen?
Councilman White, if you want to go ahead and ask your questions.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Just a couple of questions. First off, I would echo my colleague, Dr. Aldridge, her comment on the need for event space. I think that's, that's a real, a real need for the community, particularly since the proposed or the convention center project that was mentioned several years ago, never got off the ground. But my question would, is specifically related to the hotel. So you have 150 units with this proposed expansion. From your expertise, how long would it take you to analyze the data to look at your occupancy rate before you were able to say 150 units isn't going to be enough? We're going to have to go to, we're going to have to propose another 150 or 300 units. What's the, in your experience, what's, what's the general timeline for those types of decisions to be made?
Yeah, I think generally we would want to get through at least two quarters. Councilman White, and I, and I think the reason for that is we need to understand if there's going to be seasonality. And I, you know, we're all crossing our fingers now with the existing Swan Ranch property. You know, when the weather does start to turn, is that going to change the traffic patterns and the behavior of the Colorado customers? We don't know yet. We think we know that we think most of them will continue to come because of the reasons that, that Nick had mentioned earlier about it's, you know, we're an easier drive even if it's snowing. But the question becomes then on the hotel side, you know, midweek in particular, you know, those are going to be the challenging days to try to fill a hotel. To us, that's the opportunity to drive events and meetings and things like that. Because on the weekends, we could sell the hotel, I'm sure, you know, 52 weeks out of the year, no problem, Friday and Saturday nights. So that, I think, is the opportunity. And then what's the depth of that business in the market? And I think what we're starting to see is, as the word is getting out in Colorado about our facility, you know, we're having an average of 500 to 600 new customers show up every week so far. So we're, we're building that database that are interested in coming up for, you know, our form of entertainment. So I know I'm giving you a long answer, and I didn't mean it to be, but I suspect it'll be about two quarters. We'll be able to get a sense of the seasonality.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I just want to thank you for the information. Not, not a long answer at all. I really appreciate all, all the information you provided.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else do we have, Jen?
So we don't have anyone else, but I think we have the third partner, Mr. John Sheldon on, and he had his hand raised. So I'm just going to, I'm going to assume it's him, and I'm going to upgrade him. Mr. Sheldon, I'm doing that right now. I hope it's not a Zoom bomber.
No, it's not. Depending on what phone, you know, what hat he's wearing, it might be.
Okay, so he should be upgraded. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
There he is.
Hey, there. Again, apologies. My Zoom didn't work for some reason, so I'm on my phone. Frankly, I can't remember why my hand was raised at the time, so I apologize. But I just add on to what Pete's, the last question that came up. Another thing that we would continue to analyze is any regretted business for meetings or conventions of conference space. And there's also a relationship between the number of hotel rooms and the size of the meeting space and how that, how we, how would we work also in concert with other hotels in the area and so forth. So, I mean, we have a hotel study already that's done. It didn't focus so much on meeting space, but more on size of hotel rooms. And then, you know, the other component is actually the viability of the customers to take advantage and what our ADR is, our average daily rate and that kind of stuff. So a lot, a lot more things to come.
And John is pretty modest, but John, John is our hotel expert and And, and John is pretty modest, but John, John is our hotel expert and has spent. More years than I can count in, in Hilton Hotels and we all worked for Hyatt Hotels for a very long time. So. We have a, a, a pretty extensive hotel background as a group in general, so we're. Pretty sensitive about, you know, how to run a hotel right. And then the, the, the other amenities like meeting spaces and convention space, et cetera. That might be able to drive a different, additional traffic, so.
And please rest assured that I, I will be pushing for the maximum, you know, feasibility that we can come up with. Based on my experience. But, um.
Okay, uh, let me come back to the panel here, uh, Dr. Aldridge.
Uh, President Escabel, through you. I was just curious, um, about the average starting wages that, uh, you currently are. Um, advertising or offering to your employees. Um, and whether that, quite honestly, um, is a, a livable wage considering the distance they travel to get to and from work and. Um, you know, the other considerations that there may be.
Doctor, I, I can, um, a- answer that. I'm sure others can weigh in. You know, when we first started recruiting for Swan Ranch, and I'll, I'll talk about Swan in general, but this actually goes, uh, would it? Be the same answer almost across our portfolio of now ten locations. You know, we, we advertised, uh, we were trying to hire over a hundred and thirty-five team members. Initially, and we're, we're not there. We're, we're, I think a hundred and ten. Steve might be able to give us the exact number. But, you know, we, we had to increase our starting wage twice. And we had to add a, um, sign-on bonus to really start to see traction in the market for people, uh, you know, to. Honestly, complete the onboarding process and actually show up for work. So it's been a bit of a struggle. We're, we're currently between eighteen and twenty dollars an hour, depending on the different departments for hourly wages. And obviously salary positions are much higher, uh, and of course with that comes benefits, et cetera. So I don't, I don't know if that's, that's the question you're asking. But, uh, you know, we do obviously give merit increases every year as well as cost of living, but. It was a struggle to get, to get to the staffing levels we're currently at and we're still not where we want to be, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I think that you're, you are correct that. When you're competing with Breeze Through Car Wash that starts at eighteen sixty-five an hour plus benefits. Um, and you know, a lot of our restaurants, even Chick-fil-A, I believe, right now is starting at over eighteen dollars an hour. Um, when you add the additional distance that some of those entry-level employees may be having to travel to get to and from work, it does become, um. Harder to get them to, um, go through the onboarding process. But as a, uh, one of the areas I've taught for many years and I am, I'm currently a certified hospitality instructor, the only one in the state. Um, it's, hospitality is a tough business to, um, attract people to work in. Sometimes initially, especially at entry-level positions, if you can't offer a significant, um, advantage in wage. So, thank you for your efforts in that.
Doctor, could I just add something to what Pete said? Um, as Pete has alluded to, Pete, John and I were part of, um, Hyatt. Gaming at fairly high levels. Pete was the president of that, of that division. Uh, during our many, many, many years, uh, with Hyatt. Um, we, I, I looked after the international side of things, so we had casinos in various parts of the world. And in the U.S., obviously, um. We were very, very big on local development. In fact, even if we went into an area where we were in Greece, we were in Argentina, various other Spain, uh, various countries. But in certain countries, there was no gaming history. There was no pool of qualified employees. To, to, to take from. And that's very, very true about Wyoming, even though HHR has been around since twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And what I'm getting at is we had a, a, a vision that everything should be local, which is also what we do in Wyoming. And in all our international, uh, locations, we had a six-month maximum for promoting from within. In other words, our influx. Of initially expatriate, uh, management. Could only stay for six months and their sole, uh, not sole, but their, their, one of their main focuses was developing their replacement. And I'm proud to say, on behalf of, of, of our company, that everybody in, in Swan. Uh, and indeed, and the other nine locations. There, we've, apparently there's one. I've, I've never met this one person, but there's one person that's actually not from Wyoming, although God knows where they're from. Um, but the, the, but everybody else, every key position. Every supervisory position and why, and, and Swan's only been open two and a half, three months, three and a half months. Is from local employment, is from developed. Uh, people that started off in, in one position and has been promoted up. And, uh, you know, I'll tell you that all our managers will end up being people that started at, at, at a different level. Um, a rank and file level and we've developed, we, we've got ongoing development training. Um, we've got on, ongoing management training. We actually brought a lot of our focus from the very large. Hyatt Hotel, uh, side that were very big in management development and staff development. So one of the things that we, we can offer, not just a good starting rate, that we regularly measure. Uh, very regularly against what the, what the market is, is out there offering. Is we can give them a career. And I say this all the time, we don't offer jobs, we offer careers. Um. Hopefully that goes some way to also answering about why. Um, you know, it's beneficial. We're actually in a few competitions as employee, you know, major. Five-star employees that are coming in from like industry and stuff, so it, I hope that also gives some added information.
Yeah.
Doctor, ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a few more questions that have come up. Um, on the theater, I. I had assumed that would be more like a stage for live performances as opposed to a cinema, so. But which is it or is it both?
Yeah, no, I, I, Councilman, that's, that's correct. It, it's really going to be designed, as, as we said, as one. Uh, entertainment space, but also a multipurpose area. It could be converted and for other uses, but the, the primary build-out would be, you know, sound system and. Acoustics and everything to support, um, you know, an eight hundred-room, um, theater.
Okay. On the two restaurants on your plans are shown at about four thousand square feet. How many? How many? The, 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 I guess in the seating in, in those, what is proposed?
Yeah, right. Right now it's roughly about a hundred and fifty seats each, but we couldn't tell you what type of restaurant. It was just more right now. Space planning and that was really tied into. Knowing we're going to have more traffic because of the bigger building as well as a potential hotel. Um, we might have very, very limited food in the hotel. Really wanted the peo, people to be able to walk into the other two facilities to have. Full meals, if you will.
Okay, and, um, I. How did, on the comment that you have gained averaging five to six hundred new customers a week, what kind of research do you do to determine that?
It's our players' club. So when it signs up for the club.
Okay.
We have access to, you know, where they come from and.
I was wondering how you, yeah, how you garnered all that information. And then can you review the timeline for me again? Once you get the, assuming you get letters of support from us and the county, then. When would you plan to go to the gaming commission?
The next one that we could go to would be January.
January? And how long does it take them to make a decision?
Well, they review the application and by the, by the night, by the January meeting, they would have it, you know, they would make their decision at that point.
In, in January?
Yeah.
Okay, so assuming you have all that acceptance, do you start breaking ground in the spring then?
That would be their question. That'd be Pete.
All right, Pete.
Yep, yeah, and then.
Is, is a projection to break ground in the spring if you have everything, all the permits?
What we would need to do would be, once we have the gaming commission approval, then we would start. The architectural and engineering work, which we predict could be, you know, six, six to eight months to finish. Uh, once that's done, then obviously we'd have plans, we'd have to come back to the city. For the permitting process, construction, all of that, that review and activity. So I, I think it's hard to predict, but. An exact starting time, but I think as Steve alluded to in the beginning, it's, it's taken us two years from start to finish for Swan. And, and I think that's why we're so eager to, to at least get the initial discussions finished, make sure there's support. Go to the gaming commission, make sure there's support there. Then we really start doing the. I mean, I think the architectural and engineering alone is over a million and a half dollars, we, we estimated for this. So before we spend that kind of money, we want to make sure we've got. Everybody on board and everybody comfortable with what we're doing before we start, uh, doing the additional work.
Okay. Mr. President, thank you. I think that's all my questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any others? Uh, I had one, it had to do with, uh, when people come into your establishment and they get the ticket, uh. To go cash in their winnings. Do they receive the option of giving the change to nonprofits?
We, we are working on that. We wanted to make sure that, obviously, all the equipment worked first. Which we still have some hiccups here and there, but.
And it'll be local nonprofits.
We, yeah, we can select any nonprofit.
Okay.
Yeah. So obviously we would look for local nonprofits.
Great. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything? All right, uh, thanks for coming and being here with us on Zoom online, uh, for all the information. We wish you all the best of luck. Hopefully have a groundbreaking Zoom. And, uh, another ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
So, uh. We're looking forward to seeing you, uh, after the new year.
Well, thank you for your time.
New council members.
I think what we'd like to do is report back to you after we, we have the gaming commissioner review and discussion and, and basically keep you updated on, on, on where we are and what the progress is.
Absolutely. Looking forward to that.
Yeah.
And, uh, the mayor's nodding his head too. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.